Roll call.
Council Button.
Present.
President Council Cahill.
Present.
President Council Capano.
Present.
President Council Calucci.
Present.
President Council Breit.
Present.
President Council Seer.
Present.
President Council Ford.
Present.
President Council Lozey.
Present.
President Council Neff.
Present.
President Council Phelan.
Present.
President Council Trahan.
Present.
President, eleven present.
Can we all please rise from all the silence?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which is theirs, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as it is for all.
We need a motion to accept the minutes of April 9.
Motion made and seconded in discussion. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries.
Communication.
Communications.
Um, we have a communication from our on the Mayan, dear councilors, while I do no question the noble intentions underlying the homeowners' bill of rights ordinance, I have serious concerns about approving it as law in the city of Lynn and hereby respectfully veto the same. Among these concerns, our requirements of this type should not be introduced at the local level but rather the province of state and federal government. In fact, a thirteen-member task force established by section four of chapter 194 of the Acts of 2012 is currently meeting to explore the feasibility of implementing statewide many of the protections and remedies contemplated by the Lynn ordinance. The proposed ordinance would create classes of tenants not currently recognized under Massachusetts law and would likely lead to lengthy and costly challenges in the courts. Put quite simply, the loan agreement underlying the mortgage is a legal binding contract between the borrower and the lender, and I do not believe that it is the right of government to interfere with any such existing contract, very truly as Judith Lanning and Kennedy Mayor.
Council Capano, I'd like to make a motion, oh, right, may I just be honest?
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. I'm going to open the floor to discussion, but before I recognize Council Capano, I'd just like to let the audience know that tonight's issue on the agenda, the veto and the potential override, is not a public hearing. The public hearing occurred when the ordinance was first in front of us, so the procedure's a little different than the last time, I think many of you were here. Council Capano.
I'd like to suspend the rules to allow one person from each side to speak, seeing there's so many people here tonight, maybe a couple minutes or two more.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I believe that you were requested by an individual to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll be brief. We all know my stand on this issue, and I think it's a historic and courageous thing that this city council did two weeks ago, but I didn't want to take a couple moments just to highlight a couple of the issues in the mayor's veto. First of all, the requirement that she's claiming is not the province of state and federal government and not the Lynn City Council's nonsense, and let me tell you why. When another government fails to act responsibly and timely to solve an issue that affects the great city of Lynn, then it's beholden upon this city council to step up to the plate as you did and set the tone and make the corrections, and quite frankly, it's also the mayor's obligation to do that, but sadly, she didn't. Second issue about creating a class of tenants that are not recognized, had the banks not used fraudulent documents to take people's homes away from them, there would be no need to have a separate class of tenants. They created that. Her issue on number three about the loan agreement and the mortgage being legal binding documents, she's absolutely correct, they are. They are, if the documents that are recorded in the Essex Registry of Deeds associated with those mortgages were the real thing. They're not, they're fraudulent, and any attorney will tell you. When that happens, as far as I'm concerned, the whole ball of wax is out the window, and that is why the banks have put such enormous pressure, not only on this city council but on the mayor, to veto this, because they know that you people have passed the toughest ordinance in the United States of America. The buck stops at my desk, because I will not record their fraudulent foreclosure documents, I will not record them unless I receive a certificate of compliance. So to put it where I come from, and I grew up in West Lynn, the bank's arguments and the mayor's arguments and her veto to me are nothing but happy hustler. And I mean that for my heart, because I've been fighting this issue, as many in this room have been fighting it for three years, and I want to close on this. I was deeply, deeply disappointed when I read the letter in the line that was signed by Eastern Bank and five other banks. The old Eastern Bank I knew would have never written that letter. Let me give you a couple of facts that I think you'd have to be aware of. Eastern Bank, since nine, since 2008 through today, have only had, only, and believe me, I'd say that because I want you to understand Bank of America has thousands upon thousands of foreclosures. They had eighteen, eighteen in that period of time. Community credit union who signed the letter had five. The Equitable Cooperative Bank had one, and the Sogas Bank had four since 2000. You don't start with the most. Lowell Bank, who signed the letter to the editor asking the mayor an applauding for for vetoing it, hasn't had one foreclosure in the city of Lynn. Now that speaks volumes to me, because obviously Eastern Bank picked up the phone for whatever reason and put pressure on these other banks to sign, but I'm going to tell you something. I went back to my office after reading that letter to the editor, and I said, "Why in God's name did they do this? Why would they be opposed to sitting across the table, mediating with homeowners or making banks put up money to maintain buildings?" And I said, "Well, maybe it has something to do with the fact, two and a half years ago, I exposed the little scheme that they were involved in. When you pay your mortgage off, you receive a discharge of mortgage, and you send it to the Essex Registry of Deeds for $75, and we record it, and we send you back a free copy." Eastern Bank sent out letters throughout my district to people congratulating them on paying off their mortgage. Here it is, in the letter. They said, "Send us $150, and we will do you a favor. We'll record your discharge, we'll send it into the registry of deeds, and we'll send you back the copy that they send us." So for $75, they gave people a 46-cent stamp, that's all they did, and mailed it to the registry. So I said, "Well, perhaps that's the reason why they are so upset about this ordinance." And I said to myself, "You know, we're going to crank up the registry fraud squad again." And I never paid much attention to the local banks, to be honest with you, because the big boys were creating such a mess in this country that some of them got passed. So I thought I'd bring another little item of interest here. This is a stack of documents recorded by that bank with first-class, A-number-one, Academy Award-winning robo-signers. They've tainted mortgages, and quite frankly, they ought to be ashamed of themselves. They should be here in this chamber this evening, supporting this, or if they were opposed to it, they should have had the courage, along with these other banks and the other people who signed this letter, to show up before this city council and stand up and let everybody know just what their problem was. I'm going to tell you something, what you people have done has been absolutely amazing, and I've never been prouder of the city council, and I was a member of this council for six years. And I can tell you one other thing, he didn't fall for the phony baloney threat that Isaac Holmes so eloquently dismantled in his articulate and well-written "Yes, Senator." And these banks said, "If you pass this, it's going to restrict our ability to lend money in the city of Lynn." That's called redlining. Isaac was right, and they know that, and they know better than that. I'm going to leave you tonight with what E.B. White once said, the great journalist. He said, "Hang on to your hat and hold on to your hope, and wind the clock back, for tomorrow's another day." And all these good people are asking for us another day so that they can save their homes, they can save their neighborhoods from abandoned buildings. I need another day so I can continue to fight and maintain the integrity of the Lynn recoration system in this, not only in this county but across this country. Simply put, the mayor caved. She gave in to the big banks, she gave in to the lobbyists, and she gave in to the foreclosure militaries. I know you won't. Thank you very much.
Councilor Capano's motion offered the ability of anybody that wishes to speak to the opposite opinion of Mr. O'Brien, that they welcome to step to the podium. Thank you. Open the floor for discussion from the council. Council Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to take the time to thank Council President Phelan and Council Capano for this wonderful thing that they've done. I can't believe that the mayor has gone against all these people here tonight. You know, she saw the crowd, she saw all the letters, she's seen all the protests in the city hall, she knows how important this is to these people. They're losing their homes, they have, you know, they have nowhere to go. So I just, again, like to thank everybody who works so hard on this, for all the people who are staying organized and coming out and showing their support, and hopefully, you know, this will carry them through and get back in their homes. So, thanks.
Council Capano, I want to be dead-oss here, I know we've discussed this at length, and it just, it comes down to the role of government, what you believe government should be doing. If you believe in the small, the dark government and the free market with no interference from government at all, then you're not going to support this ordinance, but if you believe that we should come together in times of crisis, if government doesn't intervene, then who will? This is our chance to help.
Council Cahill, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to, again, thank you for your leadership on this. Thank you for Councilor Capano's leadership on this, and it's amazing that so many folks have showed up time and time again on this subject, obviously, it's a very important subject. You know, we've heard on both sides, I think, for the last couple of weeks, all the councilors, we've heard from the banking community, we've heard from folks in the room, it seems like sometimes both sides focus on the extremes. I've heard from bankers saying, "Some people just entered into these contracts and never ever wanted to pay a dime." And then we have folks saying, "Some of these banks just never, never, ever wanted to negotiate with us." And I think we focus on the hedges, we forget about all the good folks in the middle. We heard from David Service, who had one foreclosure in all those years, where some of the worst financial and housing crises of our history in the nation, and he did the right thing. And there's a ton of folks in here who did the right thing, too. So I think for this ordinance, we should focus on the people who are doing the good, the good in the community. I guess the goal is for this ordinance ever, never, ever to be used, right? If no one's being foreclosed on, there's no need to force anyone into a negotiation. So I understand that the mayor had concerns. You know, I don't want to turn this into us force them, because, again, it's divisive in the community. There's plenty of folks that I see out here that contribute a lot of their time to community groups and bettering this community, and there's banks out there that donate a lot of money and time also to a lot of our community groups, so I'm confident that this is probably going to pass. I'm excited about it, but hope, again, we never have to use it, and I think that after this is all said and done, the lenders and the borrowers, let's just go on and be prosperous and live in our happy homes and be able to make money the old, good, old-fashioned American way, and I just want to, I just want to be part of it, so, thanks for letting me be part of it.
Council Seer.
Who's the question? As a council player's boss in this ward, and then the foreclosed on, I've seen the line, these people are going through, men, Council Capano, Mr. D'Arcy, John Ryan, and yourself, Mr. President, for working so hard on this. When you first brought it to my attention, I had a lot of concerns, a lot of, like, hard work and effort you put into it, and I do believe it's a good thing for all the people, and not just people who are losing their houses, but people who are in rough times. Gives everybody a little bit of hope, and I just want to say thank you to the three of you for all your hard work, and I'm in favor of vetoing, amazing decision. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Council Button.
I thank Council Capano for her best words, let's talk, keep the dead loss, I call for a vote.
Point well taken. Any further discussion? Before I do call for the vote, I do want to point out, I saw three elected officials in the audience, school committee woman Maria Carrasco's here, school committee woman Donna Coler, and John Ford, I believe, is back. Roll call.
Council Button.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Breit.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes.
Next, I'm on the agenda.
Mr. President.
Council Seer.
I suspend the rules, so we vote on taking or bringing up Brookline Street.
I'll second that motion. Motion made to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Seer.
Thank you. So a lot of men in my ward have spent whole part of their city on the, it's not a good, it's too, the voters out there, it's been blamed on the neighborhood down there. I think the city is a rather proud, good, music, it's probably putting, putting middle school down there.
That's okay. Don't worry about it, we'll leave it up, just walk through it. Which is made and seconded.
Order that the city of Lynn take the eminent domain of property located at 92 and 118 and 120 Brookline Street, Lynn Mast, for the purpose of construction of the new Thurgood Marshall Middle School is permitted by Massachusetts General Law, chapter 79A.
That's the motion by Council Seer, it's been seconded by Council Trahan. Discussion. Council Seer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note for the record, Council Button and myself, as well as Council Trahan, were, over the last two, two and a half years of Brookline Street, all the residents, other people are in favor of us putting this new school in, so I think it's a really good thing, and I would ask my fellow councilors to go on, this entire city, I would ask my fellow councilors to go on.
Thank you. Council Cahill.
Can I ask one question to Mr. Donovan for the agenda? Mr. Donovan, would you mind coming to the podium? Council Cahill.
Thank you.
Mr. Donovan, so this Brookline Street, and then there's the existing site of Thurgood Marshall, correct?
Yes, sir.
Could you please tell us what entails by utilizing the Brookline site versus the existing site for Thurgood Marshall, and maybe some cost estimates as well?
Yes, sir. The building committee, the Marshall, the building committee looked at three sites, and the Marshall site was the first one that committee looked at, and in order to build the school at that site, it was determined that land takings would be necessary, accommodated and built.
No big deal.
Reason for land takings would be that the existing site is not large enough to hold middle school, 1100 students, with the parking, meet, as best as can be, the zoning requirements and then the educational requirements of the middle school, and the issue of the swing space, where the kids go when the building is being built. There are, the engineers looked at it, the architects looked at it, we did some, they did some layouts, and they presented it to the MSBA. It would require taking approximately 29 residents, families would be put out, and nine businesses, okay? That, that taking cost would be approximately $4.8 million with relocations. The Brookline Street site, it's a sufficiently big site, one business owns the large plaza which had one building on it, and then there are two residences which have left that site. The Brookline Street site has less relocations, less displacement in the community, has the lower, lowest taking cost, there's no, zero disruption to the school and the children's education, because the building would be built on that site while the school goes on at the other, the other location, when the building's built, then we went to it. This site has been approved by the school building committee, and it was approved by the Lynn School Committee, and the site was approved by the MSBA. It allows the city to acquire the property at the lowest cost in displacing the least amount of residences to accomplish this goal.
So, so based on the restrictions, the density in those neighborhoods, the costs, and the least disruption to the students, in your opinion, this is the best location for the school?
Yes, sir. The sites were limited because we could only pick sites for the Marshall School from area in that school district, so it was limited to that third of the city, and in that third of the city, this is the best site that we could find to locate the middle school. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I'll just leave you with one question, if you don't mind. It's my understanding, if you don't mind, from the chair, that the school committee voted unanimously to recommend that the council take this action, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
And your opinion?
I think this is the preference I definitely would recommend myself.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Council Button.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Breit.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan. Yes, eleven yes.
And does that need an emergency? Council Seer.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, I'm going to second it, if you see what I have.
Motion made and seconded by Council Button. Roll call.
Council Button.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Breit.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes.
And I would like to compliment Council Button and Council Seer for all the work that they did leading up to this point, and it was a lot of work ahead, just wanted to state that for the record. Next item on the agenda?
We have several communications from our on the mayor. Dear councils, I'm hereby appointing Mr. Gregory Ozias to the Citizens Advisory Board to replace Ron Santa Romano, who's to Ozias' term is effective immediately. Sincerely, Judith Lanning and Kennedy Mayor. Don't be reading altogether, we have been, um... Dear councils, I'm hereby appointing Mr. Adam DiNati to the Lynn Historical Commission to replace his fellow Van Merlin. Mr. DiNati's term is effective immediately and will expire on February 24, 2016. Dear councils, I'm hereby reappointing Mr. Kyle Greeman to the Lynn Historical Commission. Mr. Greeman's term is effective immediately and will expire on February 24, 2015. Dear councils, I'm hereby reappointing Philip Brooks and Laura Ipulidi to the Conservation Commission. Their terms are effective immediately and will expire on May 22, 2016. Dear councils, I'm hereby reappointing Ms. Pam Barrett to the Lynn Disability Commission. Ms. Barrett's term is effective immediately and will expire July 12, 2015. And dear councils, I'm hereby reappointing Calvin Anderson and Caterini, Pande Giatracus, Kudanas, and Catherine Rind to the Lynn Historical Commission. Their terms are effective immediately and will expire on February 24, 2016. Sincerely, Judith Lanning and Kennedy Mayor.
Motion to approve the appointments.
Okay, unless, I'll take that as a motion to approve all of them, unless any councilor wants to vote on any individually. Motion made, it's like your second.
Right.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearings.
We have another communication from Richard Fortucci. Dear councils, you have a council order before you, if you are review, the order is administrative in nature and corrects the wording regarding the mayor's discretionary spending authority. I've found one council provided the corrective language, the corrective wording neither enhances nor diminishes the mayor's discretionary spending authority. Sincerely, Richard J. Fortucci, Treasurer. Order that the amounts indicated above each capital expenditure item are necessarily estimates, and that the mayor may allocate more funds to any one or more of such items unless to others, so long as, in the judgment of the mayor, each of such capital expenditure items described above can be completed within the total appropriation made by this order. Further order that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to qualify under chapter 44A of the general laws, any and all warrants of the city to be issued pursuant to this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials that the Commonwealth may require.
What's the motion of the council? Motion approved. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Button.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Breit.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford. Absent Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Do you need an emergency?
Mr. Fortucci? Mr. Fortucci, does that order need an emergency? Thank you.
We have a public hearing petition at JV Auto Center.
Excuse me, before we read the, Council Cahill, thank you. Is that going without emergency? Will it delay? Will it delay the implementation? Mr. Fortucci, could you come to the podium, please? Do you have a question? I believe Council Cahill doesn't want.
Yes.
I'm afraid that being delayed. Council Cahill, if you could restate the question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fortucci, without a verdict, will this delay the implementation of these projects? No, the original bond audit was before he backed in December. It was approved, and again, this is administrative in nature, just to clarify some of the wording on it, that's, that's the first part of the answer. The second part of the answer is, the most critical phase of this is satisfying legal requirements for bond audits. We've all but done that at this point, so that's really the critical piece of this that would prevent it from moving forward. We've been working on that on a daily basis with bond advisors and our board counsel, and we're just about at the point... and we're just about at the point where we've satisfied everything as far as the city's perspective, providing them due diligence and some of our financial information, as well as fulfilling the legal requirements that they've asked of us. So we're almost at the cusp now of actually having this deal to bid within the next two, two and a half weeks to secure that form of the new bond.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Fortucci? Counsel Trahan.
Thank you. I just one question. How long before that lunch actually is it available?
Guessing at this time, possibly a bit too. Again, it just, it's a one list, it's also, it's just compounded legal requirements and all other facets of borrowing this money, but we're pretty much on course now. We should have this done.
Any other questions for Mr. Fortucci? Thank you. I believe you're on the roll call.
Yeah.
Next item.
Public hearing petition at J.D. Auto, George A. Benitez, for permission for a sign permit at 100 A Central Ave.
I'd like to open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody who's to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition? Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Creighton.
Mr. President, through you two members, I still need to work out a number of issues with the petitioners. I'd recommend to the table of petitioners.
Motion made to table, seconded, non-debatable. Roll call.
Counsel Button.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Aneth.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes.